I'd like to welcome the public to this evening's Bloomington City Council Public Safety Committee meeting. Today is Thursday, January 14th, and it is little after 7:00 PM. Seeing that our Public Safety Committee members are present, I'll call this meeting to order. I am Councilmember Sims. Members of this committee are Councilmember Pete Mon Smith, as I see them on my screen, Councilmember Sandberg, and Councilmember Scambler. Today's discussion, well, actually, we'll go over the agenda. If you'll notice on number two, it says "Discussion on Unhoused Population in Bloomington." And I wish to say that the discussion part, as we think of discussion, is incorrect. And that is the fault of the chair. I didn't catch it. But what we will do is receive information this evening from those in that marginalized unhoused population demographic, as well as advocates and service providers to that group. There will not be a back and forth two-way conversation per se. There will not be a question and answer, period. However, questions can be asked, and it is possible one of our council members could answer some of those if they choose to in their final comments. Lastly, I'd like to say that we really wanted to hear from the public this evening to receive information. And we did not invite anyone from the mayor's office or any of the city staff to attend this meeting. Now, I'd like to introduce this topic. We're here today again to receive information from specifically our homeless or unhoused population, from those who are direct advocates, from those are direct advocates to that population, and those that are in the social service sector that provides services to all of our citizens. This includes any and all who wish to speak on this topic. We on this committee have heard public comment on this topic in our regular council meetings, are involved in broader community discussions, and wanted to provide another platform and an opportunity to hear from you all, the public. One thing I'd like to address very quickly, if I may. There's been a question that I overheard that maybe this should be a part of our Housing Committee format. And if you're talking about housing for the homeless, I don't disagree with that, and this topic could go there as well. But the reason I, as the Chair, selected to come to the Public Safety Committee meeting is because we are the committee and this council approved in advance Ordinance 2017, which established the Community Access on Public Safety Commission, the CAPS Commission. And why I thought it was very appropriate to have this discussion in this format this evening. In Ordinance 20-17, the first "Whereas" clause says, "Whereas the City of Bloomington's Comprehensive Plan lists as two of its core principles to fortify our strong commitment to equality, acceptance, openness, and public engagement, and to fortify our progress toward improving public safety and civility." And whereas clause number four goes on to say, "Whereas public safety means different things to different people, and the views held by marginalized demographic groups in Bloomington regarding public safety are often not heard." Within that demographic are those who are homeless or who have experienced homelessness. We also include those who work with or serve this demographic as they are valued community resources and are encouraged to speak. We will have a few brief council comments shortly, if anyone cares to do that. Then we will proceed to public comment. Depending on how many people we have indicated to speak, then we will decide at that point the amount of time, if there's a time limit based on the number of people who wanting to speak. At the end of the meeting, there will be additional and final council comments, and then we will adjourn. And it is our hope, or at least this meeting is scheduled for adjournment at 9:00 PM. So having said that, are there any of my council colleagues that would like to make a brief statement before we begin? Councilmember Pete Mon Smith.
Yes, first of all, I would like to express my disappointment that mayors of, members of the mayor's administration and the mayor himself were not invited to this meeting. I'm surprised by that. I would have invited him myself, but I assumed that the Chair or the council office would have invited him to this meeting. I think it's very important that the mayor or his designees hear what the people will say to us tonight. So we can only hope that they are here anyway and/or will listen to the recording of this meeting or follow it on CATS. As to the homelessness situation, particularly in Seminary Park, I am a signatory of the letter that was issued by Beacon Inc. on Monday morning that asked the mayor to extend the moratorium on evictions in our public parks through the course of the COVID pandemic for several reasons. I'm sure we'll hear more about those from the public this evening. I understand that this afternoon the mayor asked people to be cleared from the park and move to other housing options or other locations. And I believe that that was the wrong move. We at least could have waited until until cancer flats opened in February, where I believe 10 of the people living in seminary will have a place to live. Anyway, I look forward to hearing from the public tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pete Mon Smith. Any further opening brief comments? Thank you very much. We will now move to a public comment. I would also like to add that as we get into public comment, as Councilmember Pete Mon Smith has alluded to, this is very meaningful and could be somewhat emotional. But I would ask, if at all possible, that we keep our comments civil and civil as we just proceed. I would also like to add that we hope to get to everyone. And if by chance we don't get to everyone, and I think we will, or if you choose to, you can feel free to please contact our council office with any of your questions or comments or concerns. And that email is Or you could call our office. Our staff will gladly take the message and make sure us council members are aware of it. And that phone number is 812-349-3409. So again, thanks, everyone, for attending this evening. Mr. Lucas, do we have any indication of the number of speakers? Or for a time limit based on, do you have any suggestion on time limit?
Well, I see the meeting has about 72 folks in it at the moment. I've seen hands go up for any members of the public who would like to comment. You can indicate your desire to do so by, again, using the raise hand function. You should be able to click on the Participants button at the bottom of your screen. And that, for some folks, may bring up a button to raise your hand. For other folks, there's a sidebar with a button with three dots on the bottom right that you can click to raise your hand. And if all of that fails and you can't find the raise hand function, simply type a message into the chat for the meeting host to let me know you'd like to comment. And as I've been speaking, see about 10 or so folks with their hands raised. Got one message over chat at the moment. Now another. About 14 or 15 people so far have indicated they'd like to comment.
Okay, is it proper to start with, for an example, like we normally do, five minutes, but then install a different limit?
I know. I think everybody who would like to speak has to have the same amount of time.
Okay, I'll throw this with my county or committee members. If at two minutes per or three minutes, and we could get through 60 people approximately. So what do you all think from time limits? If there's any thoughts, Councilmember Scambler.
Just, I would err at a higher number. I would err in that direction. It seems that we might want to start with three minutes. I want to entertain the possibility that there are some who will arrive late. We want to be able to hear them too. And so perhaps we could start at three or four minutes and go from there.
Okay, I think in order to try to accommodate as soon as we can, I think three minutes time limit is fair. And hopefully, that's adequate for the public. So we'll inform the public that as you are acknowledged to speak, you will be given three minutes. And hopefully, we'll be able to get to everyone this evening. Without further ado, Mr. Lucas or Ms. Lacy, who do we have up?
First up, and I'm going to apologize right off the bat for any for mispronouncing anyone's name. I'm going to use your screen name as you've logged in. I know several folks probably, that's not their actual name. But first up, we have Tassi Gennady, who should be ready to comment.
Good job. You remembered how to pronounce my name. I really appreciate it. Hi, y'all. I too am a bit surprised that no one from the mayor's office is here because it seems to me that that's who's calling the shots in terms of when people are showing up to trying to evict these people, to clean the park, to do everything that happened today. You know, I really appreciate the attention and the time that you all have given to this. I'm just not sure how we can move forward without this dialogue, including not a designee, but Mayor Hamilton himself. I, you know, I have some questions for him that I don't know how to get answered in the sense that, for one, you know, Wheeler Mission keeps being offered and offered. But I'd like to actually tell a story. Two nights ago, we've been watching the park for activity at night. And there was a gentleman, and he was sitting on the bench at the bus stop. And he had a blanket over him, and that was just where he was. And so we went over to check on him. And we managed to get him into a tent. And Wheeler came to pick people up. And I said, "Would you like to go to shelter? It'll be so much warmer." And he said, "Where would I go?" And I said, "Wheeler is here to pick you up." He said, "No." And then I can't say what he actually said right after that. And I said, "Look, but it would be, I understand you're in this tent, and it's slightly better than sitting on a bench." But we didn't have a heater there for him. But he, he just wouldn't, it wasn't something he would entertain. And I know that Wheeler doesn't necessarily mean to put people off, but that's the fact of the matter, that some of these people would rather sit on a bench in the middle of the night under a blanket than go there. So I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Mark Teller.
Are you there, Mr. Teller?
Yeah.
Go ahead, please. You have three minutes. You can unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. My name is Mark Teller. I'm a member of the Bloomington Homeless Coalition. I hope everyone's having a nice, warm evening because many of your citizens are not. We are sitting in a very bad situation with what, whether we have coming our way. There seems to be misfortune with these evictions. It seems like they, they tend to happen just before very bad freezes. Last time we had an eviction, we had a very bad freeze after that. Unfortunately, one of your, your citizens passed away, as you know. We're sitting on the verge of the same thing. Make no mistake, people will be negatively affected by this, up to and including another death on your streets. We mobilized for the past several days trying to keep these folks safe, trying to give them options of other places to go. They have chosen, many of them, Seminary Park to stay. This is their home. That's their neighborhood. That's where they feel comfortable. That's right next to all of their amenities that they can get, the food, the, the day shelter, the showers. Short of that, they would have to walk miles to just get warm clothes, possibly walking through, through situations to get hot food. This is unacceptable. What we're doing right now, what we're discussing, is absolutely unacceptable. We've been working with a lot of different organizations, from Pigeon Hill Pantry to Beacon to you name it, all barring one, and you can probably assume which one we won't work with simply because the people that we represent don't want us to work with them, trying to find a solution. Everybody that has any involvement in this is simply asking for more time. We have things in the works that could solve this, temporarily, but it could solve this. We need time. We can get these people to where they need to be, to where they're happy. We just need time to save lives. And this is when I want to remind you that you're elected officials. We have a big alliance now. We will use that alliance to any means to get our ends at this point. We've got, we've got blocks. We've got different people that are coming to us asking who's helping and who is not. And we are answering it very clearly, looking at people in the eyes and telling them who is our allies and who is opposing us. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Teller. Who do we have next, sir?
Next up, we have Alex Goodlad. And since I don't believe we have the ability to have the timer displayed, I will give the time symbol or a signal when there's 15 seconds left in your time so that you can wrap up your comments. And Alex Goodlad should now be ready to comment.
Okay, so as, as I'm sitting here, I'm, I'm actually in my room with somebody else who is unhoused. Mayor, he, he may, they may or may not speak for a public comment in addition to me. We'll work it out if that's the case or not. But I, but, but I want to just say that, just make the point, in addition to all the points that I've made through email, that the, the city is portraying a narrative. And give me one cuss word. I think that narrative is bullshit. And that is that there are options and that we, you know, the advocates of the homeless and the homeless are turning down options. And, and I'll tell you what is true, which is that there are options, and they are choosing options, and they are choosing the community at Seminary Park. And not to say that, you know, the other options, Wheeler Mission isn't the community. That's, that's not my point. My point is they're choosing the options that they're given, which is, which is, you know, the community options. And there's a reason for this, which is that, which is that Wheeler Mission, I, I don't want to, you know, I, I, I've, I've heard primary sources on this say that it is not better than what is there at Seminary Park. And maybe it is for some people, maybe it is for other people, but, but let them make that decision for themselves. And I don't want to say what I heard. Maybe the other person will talk about it a little bit. But but in terms of, you know, whether the CDC is followed, because we care about the CDC guidelines. And they're not, you know, either way, it's not going to be sanitary, whatever choice you make. That's what I'm going to say. And, and to really, if, if the city really gave a crap about sanitation, crap isn't a cuss word, sorry, gotta, but they would, they would listen to the part of the petition that the BHC put out that, you know, I helped co-author, that says to, you know, listen to the CDC and put handwashing stations. That's one of the things I was asked for. And so if, if, if we really care about safety and really cared about, you know, people, people's lives and whatnot, we would listen to the community. And we would not just listen to the community, but stop obstructing the community and, and for the city to actually practice what they preach and not turn down options from the community. I yield my time, and, and maybe my friend also wants to share his, their piece of it. So yeah, um, does, they want to share? Do they have permission to share?
Yes, identify themselves, and he has three minutes.
All right. My name is Tyler Burkevile. A lot of people know me as Tethys because preferred name and whatnot. But I want to share an experience I had recently with Wheeler. And it's been a weird couch surfing situation for the past couple of weeks. But I'm kind of tired of that, and I also want to start using resources. So worst came to worst. I couldn't check myself into the psych ward for reasons I'll talk about some other time, I'm sure. But they, like, I went to Wheeler. It, it just, it, it was really unsanitary in there. They had like a plastic tarp that separated the beds. And it, it, people had cut holes in that, you know? People were coughing. People were not wearing their masks, not social distancing. And I had my face covered with my mask even while I was lying down, had my hat pulled over my face and my, the blanket I had over my mouth. And also my, the inner of my elbow over my mouth too, because I didn't feel comfortable breathing. If, if somebody doesn't feel comfortable breathing, there is something very wrong. And I ended up saying that I couldn't do it. I was going to leave because I don't, I would personally rather ask my dad to let me sleep in his car. He and I don't have a good relationship, so that takes a lot of, like, a lot of courage for me. I ended up sleeping in his car, freezing cold that night. And I would rather do that and risk getting hypothermia or something than sleep in a place that's unsanitary where the people there appear to be unkind. The staff there, they pushed this narrative of, oh, join the program, join the program. But I don't feel comfortable doing that either for reasons I don't want to disclose at this time. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Mr. Burkevile, I hope I got that correct. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up, we have Ashley Pirani, who should be ready to comment.
Go ahead, Ashley. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I want to start off my public comment by asking the board what action you, or the committee, what action you plan to take once you've collected our comments. I thank you for making space tonight, but I also need you to recognize that space is often made, but action rarely follows. I was at Seminary Park today, mostly as an observer. Thousands of people gawked on their evening commutes at the spectacle on display. And I think it was intentional on the part of the mayor because he's determined to punish those experiencing homelessness through a barrage of psychological head games. What else would you call what happened this week with the expiration of the moratorium and people wondering each day if today was going to be the day they were displaced? Today would have been an ambush had folks not been tipped off. Had that tip-off not been made, those folks would have lost everything. No warning was giving to, given to individuals in the park. Cops and a garbage truck just showed up. And that's when some amazing people in our community worked alongside the unhoused to save their things. I won't take up any more time. We have lots of folks that need to be heard. But I will leave you with this. Why? Why now is the city choosing to focus on the unhoused in the park? Why is the city not following CDC recommendations concerning encampments? And why is the city not taking an active role in figuring out their perceived problem? Why? As it stands, what's been happening isn't safe for anyone, but especially for those experiencing homelessness. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Next, next up, we have RM, who should be ready to comment.
Hello. Thank you for your time this evening. I am, I'm my page here.
I'm sorry. I believe this is Ms. Miller, but can you identify yourself?
Yes, Renee Miller.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, President Sims. We all know what this is about. It's about optics and Parents Weekend starting tomorrow. This move was about that. The following words, it's going to be from a perspective of a houseless person. It was shared by one of them today to me. I have known this man for quite a while. But he repeated today and said something that still sticks with me. And so these are my words, but his thoughts. I'm saddened when I am told by my community members who are houseless, tell me what they would have liked is to have met any one of your faces, face to face, both council members and the mayor. They've never met any one of you, including the mayor. And that saddened him and brought him to tears, actually. And it was quite upsetting and is upsetting for him when he's being evicted from his only home. They have a hard time thinking, he has a hard time thinking that any of you will ever hear his voice. And you can't so much as show up and say, "Hey, how are you doing today?" Because in that, he said, it would have gone a long ways. It would have meant a lot to him. He didn't want to go on and on about his difficulties in his life, but that would have hit his heart like many.
Apologies, Renee. I think I misclicked a button and muted you. I, you should be ready to unmute again.
So how far in was I to my statement?
It was just, just a few seconds. I'm, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So that was coming from a houseless person being really saddened that he has never seen the faces of his council members or his mayor or anybody in the mayor's office. And that would be quite disheartening to never have met the very people that are making decisions about his life and his friends' lives and his fellow community, houseless communities, people's lives. So I would like to, to ask that all of you think about that and maybe reach out and get to know these people on a first-name basis. And as far as the teardown today, it was, it was quite disgusting that the garbage truck that came to haul away these people's items actually had an American flag flying on it because then we have to ask ourselves, whose America is this? Just the rich, the housed? Why the American flag if it does not fly for us all? I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Heather Lake.
Hi. I just wanted to talk just from a personal thing, I guess. I'm with, I'm with Bloomington Homeless Coalition, and I've been working with these folks at Seminary for a while. A couple of months ago, I started bringing hot coffee and hot drinks down to the park every morning. And I really looked forward to seeing my friends in the morning. Uh, and I really looked forward to seeing my friends in the morning. I would get up and I would start the big percolator and boiling my water on the stove and I would pack all my stuff. And it's, it was, it's just been something I really enjoy. And I've been upset because I don't know where some of my friends are. And these people are my friends. Um, they call me the coffee lady. We give, we give hugs when we see each other. I know things about them. I know, you know, that, um, one man, he makes up the most beautiful songs just off the top of his head and, and he'll sing them to me. Um, I, I know another man who, we've had wonderful conversations. Um, the first time that I met him, he was outside shivering in the cold and he wouldn't take a jacket. And I said, oh, I'm a grandma, okay? You need to listen to a grandma and put on your jacket. And so he did. And from then on, he, he's been calling me grandma and I haven't seen him lately. And I don't know where he is and I don't know if he's okay. And, um, I've been wondering how I'm going to continue my service. Um, how am I going to get people their coffee in the morning if everyone's scattered out? How am I going to give them their hot chocolate in the evening and visit with them? Um, I feel like people don't, a lot of people don't see them as people. Um, but they are wonderful people and I love them and I care about them and they're really good friends. And now I, I, I don't know what's going to happen to them. I don't know where they're going to go. And it's cold and it's going to snow. And I've been up in the middle of the night, like worried about if my friends are okay. And so I just wish that the city and county would see these people, um, as I do and just really respect them. Um, and.
Ms. Lake, you're almost out of time. Can you finish up, please?
That's all my time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Next up, we have Timothy's iPhone.
I can hear me.
Hello. Yes. Can you identify yourself, please?
Yeah, my name is Timothy Clark, um, and I live on the near west side in Bloomington. Um, and, um, I'm involved with this issue because I have been helping bring food to Seminary Park. And I also just want to throw in on this because I think it's really important, um, for me to say as a person who does have a home, that the city's policy on, um, houseless folks doesn't keep me safe. Um, evicting people doesn't keep me safe now as a person who does have a home. And if I ever were to become homeless, it sure as hell would not keep me sa- safe and high. Um, and it also doesn't keep the people who are experiencing homelessness safe. Um, because they, it directly exposes them to a lot of dangers from the pandemic. It's really, really cold all the time, um, during the winter. Um, and, you know, being able to like have possessions, um, that you can trust or rely on is really, really important when you don't have a home, because you don't have a place where you can keep those things and keep them safe. Um, I want to focus on, I just wanted to say that as a person who does have a home, that like I don't want anybody to ever write policy that evicts people from Seminary Park because they think it will keep someone like me who does have a home safe. Um, the other thing I want to say is I'm actually from Utah and I want to add to this discussion. Um, the fact that, um, in Salt Lake City, um, a city that I used to live in, they had a different approach to homelessness. They had a program called Housing First, um, which basically is the idea that if you want to address the crisis of people not having homes, there is one solution and only one solution, and that is letting people have homes. Their program in Utah, when it was well-funded and it was actually cared about, they actually reduced chronic homelessness by 90% within just a couple of years. Um, and I want to say that specifically to y'all because y'all are city council people and y'all are the ones who are writing policy, which means that, um, you know, this is something that you can actually take action on to actually solve this crisis in the long term. Um, there's a lot of benefits to just giving people homes. Um, they did the math on it in Utah and they just found out that it's just straight up cheaper to give people homes than it is to try and provide this like weird net of services, to be sending people through the carceral system and to be trying to like provide services to a very scattered group of people. It's a lot easier to provide services and like help people achieve other outcomes. Like for instance, it's really hard to find a job in this economy, but it would be just infinitely harder to find a job if you didn't have an address. And like, I think a lot of people, when they, when they talk about like people not using the services available, they forget that very, very simple fact that like no business in this town is going to hire you if you don't have an address, right?
Mr. Clark, sorry, you're about out of time. Can you finish up, please?
Yes, I'll wrap up. There's a lot of empty housing in the city that is going unused right now and the city should use its clout and its power to actually secure housing for people immediately right now. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jean Kapler, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, can you?
Yes, we're here. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you to the, the Council Public Safety Committee for, uh, providing the space to hear public comment. Uh, my name's Jean Kapler. I'm a social worker and I'm also the president of the Board of Beacon, Beacon, Inc. Uh, I have to say that I am disappointed, appalled, and frankly mystified by the city's action today to clear Seminary Park or the people that were camping there. Um, I'm mystified because the city knew that Beacon is close to being able to open a low barrier shelter. Uh, we are actively working on that and, um, it's just a matter of time to be able to add a number of beds that are low barrier for folks, uh, as a viable option for many folks. I'm disappointed and appalled, uh, for several reasons, you know? Um, uh, the city took this action, uh, while, you know, talking about collaborating with, uh, nonprofit partners and service providers, but we didn't know that this was happening, um, uh, until it was happening. Um, and so, you know, uh, we couldn't get there on site to provide some support and help folks relocate. Um, and, uh, even more than that, so much more than that, this action serves only to disperse people to more isolated sites throughout the city to camp again outside, only this time oftentimes without their tents or their blankets or the rest of their belongings, because many people couldn't just pick it all up and take it with them. Um, that does not seem like preserving public safety or, or encouraging public safety. And finally, I'll end with a, a, a question because I just, I can't wrap my head around this. In the last eviction, earlier in December, uh, four or five of the people that were camping actually went to either Wheeler Mission or Wheeler Shelter or to the Stride Center. Everybody else just found somewhere else to camp. Um, and I'm wondering why the city might expect that this time would be different. So that leaves us with knowing that so many people have dispersed either in anticipation of the planned action that everybody thought was going to be Monday night. And so they, they started moving out ahead of time, many of them leaving tents behind. Uh, or the ones that left today, where are they? Are they safe? Are they safer? Or why aren't we working as a city to make, whether it's Seminary Park or some other nearby space, safer, more sanitary and with more supports? Um, so I guess I'm going to be wondering where my neighbors without houses are tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Kapler. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up, we have Kay Goodman, who should be able to unmute now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Ms. Goodman. You have three minutes.
Thank you for doing this. I'll talk quickly. I don't want to talk about myself very much, but I do work for a local social service agency and I've been doing direct support since the pandemic has started. And let me tell you, I have never been so upset with what happened today. Let me explain something. Our unhoused have been in crisis since the pandemic and before. And what the pandemic has brought, what they call the brain science behind trauma. And I keep hearing people saying, well, they should have done this, they should have done that. When, when your brain cannot function properly because you are being traumatized, it's hard. It's almost impossible to do exactly what you need to do or listen to people that want you to do what they want you to do. So here's what I have to say about this. I am calling to action Mayor Hamilton. I want Mayor Hamilton to come and speak and I want to speak with him because I have a lot to say to him. I have worked since I was 13 years old. I have paid taxes. I have never missed voting. My children I took with me at a young age. This is ridiculous. And hiding behind closed doors is not going to happen anymore. He needs to come and speak to Bloomington. And I would like to say I will continue to work with the unhoused and I will do the best that I can do. But I feel really sorry for everyone tonight that is out and is probably terrified and in crisis. And I hope, I love that our community has been stepping up. We've been giving them hope. They've been having hope. And we were so close to having that low barrier. You know, I just, as you can tell, I'm really upset and I'm usually calm, cool and collected. But today was, it was just, I, I don't even have a word for it. It was not necessary and it was for looks because parents are coming into town. I'm convinced of that. Well, maybe the media needs to get a hold of this or something, but that's all I'll say for right now. I will continue to advocate for my community because I love them. I love all of them and I hope they know that and I will continue to work hard for you. And then I would also like to say, thank you for having this tonight. I think the timing on this, I think it was needed. I think people needed to speak. And again, Mayor Hamilton, I would like to talk to you either personally, one-on-one or in this kind of format. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up, we have Nicole Johnson, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, thank you so much.
Hello, how are you? You have three minutes, please.
Hey, thank you so much. Uh, my name is Nicole Johnson and I am, uh, representing Pigeon Hill Pantry, which is working very closely with, um, Bloomington Homeless Coalition and Beacon and all of the community members, um, on the, on the ground, um, that have been helping supply, uh, various resources and time to this effort. Um, and I just want to say that, um, I have been in Bloomington since 2010. I became politically active in Bloomington in 2011 during the Occupy movement in People's Park. I am part of the reason why there are new camping laws that have made it more difficult for the unhoused to, to exist in our town. And it's part of the reason why I'm so active now, helping. Um, that being said, because of that experience, something interesting happened during Occupy. It devolved into, or didn't evolve, it evolved. It, it, it devolved out of a political statement that was, uh, tied to the greater movement and more of a highlighted issue, um, on homelessness. And Umbuntu came out after Occupy and that was proposed to the city and didn't go anywhere. Um, and this has been a long thing and, and every time camps are evicted, it's before a move-in. It's always before a move-in. And they had to do it tonight because people start coming into hotels tomorrow. It's that simple. And I'm going to tell you what the people in the park told me a couple of nights ago. They're the ones who told me, they're, they're the ones who are telling me this, by the way. Very upset people who haven't left. Um, they want us, what they want, they want all the community members to go Occupy Dunn Meadow on move-in weekend. How about that? They say they want to get rid of the tents. Maybe everybody should show them tents. So there, I'm amplifying some voices I heard. Um, as far as I'm concerned, these, a lot of these people in this community are my, are, are, they could, my children could be in this position. I have, as you start talking to individuals, the number of people who are houseless, chronically houseless in our community grew up on the hill. Whole, like extended families of, like, it, neighbors, they, like telling me stories about how and when they lived up here. Um, also, we need to remember that Lemon Lane was open up then. And a lot of these same individuals have congenital medical difficulties, um, both mental and physical. Um, and this is about systemic, 50 years, 50 years of crisis, according to census data. I, I know I'm over. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Next up, we have Molly Stewart.
Hello, um, this is Molly Stewart. I think you all know me by now. Um, it's been a really hard few weeks. Um, and I say that as someone who has a home and a job and is not in danger of becoming homeless. And I cannot imagine, uh, sorry, I'm, it's just, I'm a little overwhelmed with emotion today. Um, I didn't wake up today thinking that we were going to be called to help save everyone's belongings during the workday. Um, I was at Seminary until one o'clock yesterday morning. Um, just making sure that everything was okay, making sure that someone was there if an eviction came with no notice, which oddly happened today when I was driving to Indianapolis. So that was poor timing. Um, but I am just really, really sad. And I know that there are people on this council who are doing as much as they can under the Bloomington's structure of government. Um, I think what this past year has showed, shown us all is that the mayor has way too much power in this city. And this mayor does whatever he wants. And I know that the council is trying to find ways to stop that. So I'm not going to tell you guys what you already know. Um, there's a lot, I, I'm going to reiterate, um, some viewpoints from the homeless community. Um, one of our friends, Aries, was interviewed by an IES reporter the other night and also was, um, on WFHB. If you haven't listened to that, please listen to his interview. Um, that's a rare, a rare opportunity to have a direct voice from that community who's willing to be interviewed. And, um, we have another person who, after realizing that Aries was interviewed also, wants to be interviewed. So maybe we'll get some more. But, um, it's, it is just really frustrating and I'm really exhausted. And I am angry that the mayor is not helping us help people survive, but making it actively harder for the community who is raising money and solving problems every day. He is actively making it harder for us to keep people alive and keep people happy.
Molly, I apologize, but can you?
No, you're fine. You're fine.
Can you finish? Thank you.
I'm just ranting. It's fine. Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Thank you for your comments.
Next up, we have Reverend Forrest Gilmore, who should be able to unmute.
Thanks, everybody. I appreciate you having the meeting and want to echo Ashley Pirani's sentiment that I hope this does lead to some action, just not a, an opportunity to vent. I mean, venting is good, but it doesn't help the people that need to be supported tonight, who are out in the cold right this very minute as snow is coming our way. And, and a polar vortex is supposedly coming our way as well very soon. I think, I think the most important thing, and if I can get this very clearly to you and so that you can hear it and understand it and appreciate it, is one simple thing, which is there are not enough shelter beds in our community for the population that is street homeless right now. And, and so if you can take that one fact away from tonight, I hope it puts everything else that's going on in context. You know, this is a very unusual winter. Obviously, we're in the middle of the pandemic, actually the worst phase of the pandemic right now. But what's really, and we're in winter, of course. And, but what I think is really powerful to hear again, or hard to hear, but is this, I, I've never seen a winter like this with a street homeless population anywhere near this. Usually we get a few hardened souls that really want to be outside and, and are very capable of navigating this difficult weather and dealing with this. But that's not happening this winter. We, we did a count last week and we counted 44 people sleeping outside, 38 in Seminary Park and six in other, sorry, 39 in Seminary and six and five in other places. And my street outreach team estimated, those were all people just counted in Seminary. They didn't do counts elsewhere, but they estimate there's another at least 20 people who are sleeping outside in camps. We have no estimate of how many people are sleeping in cars. We know there's numbers even more. So, so as much as we can talk about open beds or, and the reason why those beds might be open or not, which some have mentioned, the core issue is, is we don't have enough beds. And when we don't have enough beds, that gets into constitutional and legal issues of removing people from public space. That's lawsuit territory. And, and the, there's, you know, very clear legal precedent in Martin versus Boise, where, where the city was sued for doing this very thing. And it was, it was upheld all the way through the Ninth Circuit and the Supreme Court said they didn't need to hear it. So it stood. And so it's really important that this choice that the mayor made today is illegal and unconstitutional. And, and, and that that's a dangerous precedent for the city to engage in. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Lucas?
Yes, next up, we have Kirsten White, who should now be able to unmute.
Hi, I'm the director for the Monroe County Isolation Shelter with Beacon Inc. And I want to share that five unhoused individuals who had recently and frequently used local agencies or been in close contact with many others who use local agencies have tested positive over just the past week. And that is more than our first nine months of operation combined. And when I say that, I mean, we've had people, more people who have been positive, but they haven't frequently used local agencies like these five individuals. So I really fear that this eviction spread people out during the same week that we experienced our greatest outbreak in the unhoused community. And I agree that it's not safe for people to be living outdoors in this cold weather. But as Tassie shared earlier, it's a choice that people are making. And forcing people to do what they don't want to do will not work. I know I personally hate doing things when I'm told to do them. I, I'm much more likely to do things when I personally choose to do them. And after the last eviction, only a couple of people took service providers up on the offer to move into shelters. So if people can't sleep in seminary, they will sleep somewhere else, but they will do so hidden. And it's even more unsafe for people to be camping in this weather without a community that supports them. Community goes beyond partner agencies that provide access to resources. It is also people nearby that can offer you warmth in the middle of the night, people who may offer solace and information after a robbery, most importantly, a shoulder to lean on. And I think Mary Jane Hohen explained that beautifully in her recent interview in The Bloomingtonian. She described trading shoes with her neighbors, knowing that they will give, that what they give will get, will come back around. And after the first eviction, she moved out into the woods and then she moved back to seminary for the community because she didn't like to be alone. She's been a citizen of Bloomington her whole life and she said that what she has experienced at seminary is unlike anything she's ever experienced. So I think it's very important to listen to voices like hers and to validate them. And I think it's especially important not to spread people out during the worst outbreak that we've experienced in the unhoused communities thus far. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up, we have Nathan Muchler, who should be able to unmute.
Are you there?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to take my, my three minutes. Tassie shared about Wheeler employees and a gentleman who was in a blanket at the bus stop and didn't want to go to Wheeler Mission, even though all he had was a blanket and a tent. And I was there and as the Wheeler employees walked away, I heard them laugh and say, did you see that guy? His feet were fucking purple and they laughed. His feet were purple. And they laughed about it and went about their day. They didn't reach up to someone, say, hey, I saw you guys were helping him earlier. Maybe you want to check on him? Do you want us to stick around or come back, see if he changes his mind? They just laughed. Now, Councilmember Sims, I was at a previous meeting this summer. I remember it because I was on my way to one of my daughter's friend's birthdays and stayed late to make public comment. And I spoke about how, are we going to wait for it to happen in our community? And I'm ashamed to say we did. Someone died and we're still talking. Now, I know there are magic words that mean things in, in government and in systems. And words are just that, they can't fix it. They're not going to get anyone housed, right? I've been thinking, what can we do? What can you do right now, tonight? All the members of this commission will make a closing statement. Now, the mayor's not here, but if you look in your phone, in your pockets, you've got a cell phone. Why don't you call the mayor right during your public statement? Make him listen. Leave him a voicemail urging him, do not do this. Don't come through and take people out of their homes. It's not much to ask. It's a phone call. I hate making phone calls, but I'm not on the Public Safety Commission. I'd call the mayor myself if I had his number, but I don't have his cell phone number. You do. Show the courage to pick up the phone, call the mayor during that public statement at the end, your closing statement, and tell him, please, don't do this. Prove me wrong that we're not all cowards. I yield my time.
Thank you for your comments. Who's next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up, we have screen name CB Starks, who should be able to unmute.
Hello, yes, my name is Connor Starks and apparently I am not technologically capable enough to change my screen name, so I do apologize. So initially, with my comments today, I wanted to address the mayor and the mayor's office. And so I also would like to express my, express my disappointment that they're not here. So what I would say to the council is to echo that of the last speaker, the words of the last speaker. And please make sure that the mayor and the mayor's office hears all this testimony, but all of it from everyone. I think it's vitally important that he hears this. But to that end, I'm worried that it, it might not change anything because the last time, at least in my memory, that there was such a public dispersal in town. And this is coming from someone who, you know, has a home and hears about this kind of stuff through the newspapers, was four years ago with the People's Park incident, which wound up leading to folks moving downtown and a string of deaths. And so, so the fact that the mayor and the city saw that happen and then this year decided to do something similar in the middle of winter during a pandemic is just incredibly, incredibly disheartening. And so what I would say to everyone else is just to remind them that in this past election cycle, the mayor won the primary overwhelmingly with 85% of the vote because his only major opponent had frozen their campaign amid sexual harassment allegations. And so, and knowing, you know, Bloomington and the city, it's unlikely that Republican or independent was going to win the mayorship. Not saying it's impossible, just saying historically unlikely. So if the mayor does not decide to do anything on this issue, I just would encourage the public to just remember that, to exercise their right to vote and to run and vote for candidates that they think support their interests. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up, we have Sarah Schwartz, should be able to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. You have three minutes. Thank you.
So I, I've been living here in Bloomington for, I think, enough years now that I can consider myself a townie. I've been here for about six years. And when I moved here, I started working with the Interfaith Mobile Shelter, which is no longer in existence and have continued my service through the various organizations around town, none of which I speak for. I'm here as an independent citizen. I've attended numerous meetings over the years, especially on the topic of affordable housing. And it frustrates me to no end that the mayor's office and other members in the administration are treating this problem like it came out of a vacuum. Activists and researchers have been telling the city of Bloomington that we have a housing crisis and that we have a wage crisis for many years. And what we are seeing is the quite predictable result of that. So the idea that this is, that we did not see the shark coming behind this pilot fish is, is terrifying in many ways. The utter resistance of the city to show any compassion towards people in a situation that many of us are staring at, at this moment in time, is equally horrifying. And meanwhile, I would like to point out, you know, it's great that we can celebrate these 43 units that are coming up for rent. But just a few weeks ago, the city was very excited to announce that they're destroying one of the only affordable housing complexes off 15th Street and turning that into luxury student housing. So I have a few action items that I would like to put towards, put towards the, this council, the administration. I would like to know how much in resources is being put towards making this crisis disappear rather than preventing it. And I would like to know really what the housing situation in Bloomington is. We discussed having some sort of audit on this years ago and I have seen nothing come forth from it. So just a reminder, we've seen this coming. People told you it was coming and the city chose to be unprepared for it just as they are choosing the path that they are going down in defiance of medical recommendations, social science recommendations, and the recommendations of people with a heart. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up, we have Tina Honeycutt, who should be able to unmute.
Good evening. This keeps running through my mind and I'm listening to everyone and they're giving you the, the people's voices that this is happening to. And I, I know, I can see you're hearing some of that. What I keep thinking about, and I don't know if you all are aware of this, but after they cleared the park in December, and the gentleman died afterwards, because it doesn't make them safer. They are not going to the shelters that are available. And again, I could talk about all the reasons why. And I keep thinking about, how would I feel if I had to check into a shelter at 6:30 PM and I was no, not able to leave there after that? And I couldn't bring all of my belongings. I could only bring a few things. I, there are a lot of reasons that people resist the shelters. And as we heard, they, there actually aren't enough shelter beds. So that's not even, the publicity that's been coming out from the mayor's office is not truthful. And I'm trying, I'm trying to believe that there, that the people are, are not being harming people on purpose, but there's no other way that I can see this. And I want to point out to you that after the first clearing, the, the folks were told that they should camp in the easement. They showed them exactly where they should camp and that they shouldn't camp in the park because the rules were they couldn't camp after 11 PM. Today, we learned why they did that. I can't help but think that's why they did it. Today, we learned that the reason that they could do that, they could then evict them in the daytime because the rules and, and are that they could not camp there at any time. It wasn't being enforced, but now they could enforce it during the daytime. They didn't have to wait until 11 PM when the park rules were. So to me, that's like, they were planning this all along. They moved people to a place that they could more easily terrorize them, tell them they were evicted on the 11th, and then keep them wondering. Bring more police in so that more and more of them would move out and it wouldn't be as conflicted as it was the first time this year. I'm just horrified and I hope that you all are too and that you will take this to heart and make the mayor listen. Make the mayor's office actually work with the people and work with the agencies, not just Wheeler Mission, but also with the other agencies. I yield my time.
Thank you.
Next, next up, we have Kate, who should now be able to unmute.
Thank you. My name is Kate Wrightmeyer. I'm a social worker here in Bloomington and I've been working with members of our unhoused community for the past probably 10, 10 years, give or so, give or take. And I just wanted to go ahead and echo what Tassie and Nathan were saying about people's experiences in our town with, with Wheeler. I've provided a lot of aid to a lot of unhoused persons in this, this town. And I, I want to share a story. And I might tear up a little bit. It's kind of tough, but it needs to be shared because the person who it happened to is no longer alive to share it. To Wheeler, although, although their website states that they're welcoming to all people of all genders, sexual orientations, things like that, they are absolutely not. Many unhoused neighbors of ours do not feel safe at Wheeler. And it is a statement that is widely echoed. You can volunteer one shift of shalom and hear that. No one wants to go to Wheeler. I knew two women who decided to camp in a tent because they loved each other. And people want to be with those who are close to them. Social workers like me, we care about the importance of human relationships because that's what keeps us going. These two women wanted to be with each other because they loved each other and they felt safer and more supported in their tent with each other. One night, they were sleeping in the woods and a man began to bash in their tent with a lead pole because he was trying to assault them and they wouldn't let them in. The next day, they were in my car crying because it was so traumatic. But there was nowhere for them to go because there were no beds at Friends. And Wheeler isn't safe. It's not safe. It's a joke. I don't think there are any clinicians or actual mental health professionals or even anyone with like a social worker psychiatry or psychology degree there. It's faith-based. It's not safe. I yield my time.
Thank you for your comments, Kate. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up, we have Maggie Bott, who should be able to unmute.
Yeah. Hi. So my name is Maggie and I'm here today as a representative of the IU Maurer National Lawyers Guild. Um, so part of the core mission of the National Lawyers Guild is to use the law for the people. And we intend to do that now and going forward in the Bloomington community. We are students. We are not lawyers. We can't litigate or represent people, but we know the law and we are watching. We are watching to make sure that the state is following the law. Three of us went to Seminary Park, Seminary Park the other night to act as legal observers in case the police showed up to tear people away from their homes. I felt conflicted, but you know, I felt okay leaving the park, knowing that these people would be okay for that night. The cops didn't seem to be coming. But I also felt really on edge and nervous. What would happen next? When would this eviction happen? Now, I can't imagine what it felt like to be part of the Seminary Park community, like to not know when they lose their shelter. It does not take too much empathy to understand that is a very vulnerable and painful place to be. But in addition to putting the residents in a very vulnerable position, I echo the complaints that this surprise eviction did not allow services and community members to offer help. This is also concerning from a legal perspective. This did not give us, the National Lawyers Guild, or any, anyone else in the Bloomington legal community notice that they would need to be there to observe the interactions between the Bloomington Police Department and the folks at Seminary Square. This eviction was cruel and it should not have happened. But to add insult to injury, the eviction was a secret. I demand more transparency from the mayor and I demand that the mayor leave these people alone. Thank you for holding this meeting.
Thank you for your comments.
Next up, we have Carl Pearson, who should be ready to comment.
Hi, Carl. You have three minutes.
My name is Carl Pearson, and I'm very grateful that I have a roof over my head tonight. Let us all try to put ourselves in the shoes of those who tonight are not so fortunate. I'm deeply disappointed in the city's actions today evicting the residents of Seminary Square Park. The larger question at stake here is resource allocation. We desperately need our city leaders to rethink our priorities. The city could easily afford to rent portable restrooms and hand washing stations for use in Seminary Square by selling the armored personnel carrier that sits rusting in some police department parking lot. It's beyond time for the city to figure out how to provide the amenities needed by our unhoused population. We can start by spending a fraction of what we do on the police department and instead spend the money on housing and support for those among us who struggle the most. Finally, I will support and vote for any politician who adopts a housing-first candidacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl, for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up, we have Aspen McCoy.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are. You have three, you have three minutes, Aspen.
Thank you. So hi, folks. My name is Kaylee McCoy. Sorry, my daughter's Zoom is what I'm using. And I want to thank all the folks that we've heard from that have been part of the solution so far. I attended this meeting tonight mostly just to learn, but I was hoping to learn directly from the folks that are unhoused. But listening here this evening, I've only heard a few people who are within this group. And I would ask, what efforts were made to get hotspots or laptops or smartphones to seminary tonight to have these folks speak to us with their own voices? Or why we're not hosting this meeting at the park where those folks are? If it's good enough for them to spend the night in a tent, it's certainly good enough for us to have a two-hour meeting there. We're fortunate that most of us have a home with heat, running water, restrooms, food. And I would recommend in the future that more significant effort is made to include these folks in the conversation by either hosting meetings where they are or to make appropriate tech available to these folks so they can be present. I was at Seminary Park today as an observer with my two children. My kids watched these folks being honestly failed by our community. We're using taxpayer dollars to have city employees destroy these encampments, and that is a failure of leadership. I know that our police were there, contractors were there, the City of Bloomington Street Department was there. And who knows what other departments to move these folks fifteen feet to official park grounds. And we are going to be judged by how we take care of our most vulnerable in our society. I understand that community members have concerns. I understand that our leaders are in a very difficult position. I think we have the manpower, the resources, the skills to come up with solutions to this. And in fact, we have a moral imperative to do so. If there are specific concerns, let's work on some solutions. If there's concerns about cleanliness, let's get some volunteers trained on how to appropriately clean up the park. I'll contribute my own dollars for myself or other folks to get biohazard training on how to clean up needles, human waste, whatever. If people are concerned about sanitation, temporary restrooms and hand washing stations, I will donate to that. All of these concerns can be addressed, but moving these folks from the park because it's an eyesore, that's a moral failing. We are in another surge of a deadly pandemic. We can do better. Let's do better. Okay. And I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Kaylin, I believe you said your name was. Who do we have next?
Next up, we have Kathy Crabtree, who should be ready to comment.
Hello, Kathy. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Kathy Crabtree, and I want to echo some of what I heard, especially as far as listening to the voices of those who are impacted by this. I, I hear a lot of talk about discussions with service providers and experts, but has anyone gone out and talked with these folks to see what they want? I personally would not want to be in a group shelter right now in the middle of a pandemic. I would like for the city of Bloomington to adopt a homeless bill of rights. That would include at least giving folks notice before they are going to be evicted and providing a safe place to store their belongings. The most recent announcement said they would only store some of folks' belongings. For instance, they wouldn't take anything that was wet. Well, it's the middle of winter, so a lot of things are going to be wet depending on when they go in and evict folks. What I'd really like to see city council and the administration do is put a moratorium on evictions until the pandemic is over. Just a hard, fast stop so that folks don't have it hanging over their heads. Is, is now when they're going to come? Are they going to come in an hour? Are they going to come tonight? It's just not fair to these people. They're being jerked around and they have to find people to haul their stuff at, at a moment's notice. I just think that this is cruel and heartless and that as a community, if we come together and really put our heads together and our money together, there's a lot better way to spend tax dollars than what we're currently doing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who's next, Mr. Lucas? And before we do there, I will remind folks on, in order to make a comment, you can use the raised hand function in Zoom or you can send a message to chat to our host. And we're attempting to hear from everyone who wishes to speak this evening. Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Who's next?
Next up, we have Kara, who should be ready to unmute.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes. Can you give us your full name, please?
Uh, yeah, my name is Kara Dunning. Um, I have a lot of feelings about this. I'm going to just focus on Wheeler. There, I mean, we hear over and over, people don't want to go there. If people are opting not to stay there, they have the reasons for that and those reasons are valid. That said, the reason the CDC put out guidelines regarding encampments to begin with is because shelters are inherently unsafe during this pandemic. Just like any other space where people are crammed together, such as nursing homes or prisons, there is no conceivable way to socially, be socially distant in a shelter. That is not an alternative and it's disgraceful that the mayor is suggesting that it is. That kind of takes the issue of if there are or are not enough beds to be out of the conversation because it doesn't matter. It is not safe to put people in those buildings. I yield my time.
Next up, we have Jay, who should be able to unmute now.
Hi, guys. Uh, this is actually, yeah, I'm going to. I know how things were. Just give me a second, please.
No, thank you. Sorry.
This is actually Dana Art. And I have, I'll tell a little about my story. I became homeless on July twentieth, which was my birthday. I cannot work. As everyone around town has seen, I have some pretty severe mental health issues. So yeah, but the point that I want to make is, uh, I was very suicidal on Christmas. So where did I go? I went to where my family is to the park and I spent Christmas Day with a man that had been in jail his entire life. He's fifty years old and that was his first Christmas out. And as for, as for safety, I appreciate the people that were talking about the two women and someone attacked their tent. When I stay in seminary, it's, it's the safest place for me to be. The reason I'm in seminary is because I am safe there. There is always someone there to make me feel safe. And Kay Goodman has mentioned trauma. And what people have to realize is if you spend your life in prison, you are so traumatized. And if you have those, what they're called, because, but it's like ACEs, like how people are resilient. So just, it's, it's just really frustrating and it's really sad. Also, I was doing a lot in the community and this is the story of my life. Eventually I get so crazy that everybody leaves. Well, now I have people that support me. And it's just, it's just really sad. And I keep hearing everybody say like, these people and it become a trigger word to me because it's my family. People experiencing homelessness since Christmas have helped me out with gas money. Air works super hard to protect and cure for the women. And then, you know, we do have serious cancer. So everybody just works together, you know, to survive. And literally that's what everybody is doing is just trying to stay alive one more day. It, it makes me incredibly angry that this community has furnished brand new sleeping bags and tennis shoes and everything, and the city keeps taking it. And city, I would, I would like everyone to know, the first eviction, I filed lawsuit with the American Civil Liberties Union, just like in Indianapolis, they were very successful. I'll be contacting them again tomorrow. This is not the only lawsuit. I'm actually out of, out of state focusing on legal actions that I am taking class action and individually as myself against the city of Bloomington, et cetera, et cetera. I don't have anything much more prepared to say other than that by kicking everybody out of their community, like more and more people are going to die. And you know, it's just, we lost five people between Christmas and New Year's. And like, these are just homeless people that you guys, but I know their names. I know their stories. I, I, I'm the keeper of the stuff because I have a car. So when somebody dies, I get their like heirloom possessions and I hold on to those. So, you know, it's just, people, people just don't understand unless you live it, how difficult it is. I really don't have anything intelligible to say other than my friends in seminary, they have asked me to start doing my lawyering and using my education. And they actually, with stimulus money, provided me a way out of town. So yeah, pretty cool, pretty cool what my family does for me. I'm going to get off of here, but I will be taking so much legal action. And now that I have a safe place out of state for a little while until this stimulus money my friend gave me runs out, like, I'm really going to start doing some, some stuff. So yeah.
I'm sorry, Jenna. Can you finish up? We're almost out of time.
Yeah, I didn't really say anything. Sorry. Bye.
That's okay. You're welcome. Thanks for your comments. Who's next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up, we have Cassidy Keely, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, my name is Cassidy Keely. Um, I've been at a few meetings this week and it's been pretty frustrating that basically everybody seems to be in agreement as far as who's come to these meetings and what we've all said. And still, these things are happening, which are just so traumatic and harmful to our community. And I know I've had trouble figuring out what even I can do and what my elected officials can do. When I reach out, many of them say, I agree with you and I can't do anything about it, which is a very frustrating thing to hear. You know, I just want to support all the people who have talked before me who have more intimate experiences with this. I know when I go outside, get in my car, I'm thinking about how cold it is and how hard life must be not knowing if you're going to have your safe space the next hour, the next day. And I just, I hope that we can work harder to really have an effect on this and keep our community members safe as best we can, better than we're doing right now. And I would love it if we could get a moratorium on evictions through the pandemic. But we've been asking for this for some time now. But I hope that eventually something will happen and hopefully people can do it really quickly because it is a matter of life and death. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Cassidy. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up, we have Iran Erin Mordo, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
We sure do. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, so I work in healthcare and I have worked with some people in the park. And I, hearing all the comments just made me think of some of the interactions and some of the things people have been telling me directly. And I just wanted everyone to take a minute to think about, you know, in the last year, how traumatizing COVID-19 has been for all of us. I know it's, it certainly has been for me. And I'll say that, think of most of the people who are in the park, their experience with this pandemic is almost usually ten times more traumatizing. And from some of the stories people have told me directly, I can confirm that. And so I just want to add that this kind of trauma over not knowing when they may be evicted is just going to add upon trauma that's already there. And it's going to make it more difficult for them to get services that are helpful for them at the time. And also for when we need to roll out other health services in the future, it really does break down relationships we're trying to build. So I would just hope that when people are making decisions, they can keep in mind, you know, the overall relationships we really need to build to help keep everyone safe and healthy. Thank you. I yield my time.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
Next up, we have Marshall Bailey.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can, Marshall. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Marshall Bailey. I'm a Bloomington resident. I'm a military veteran and I'm a proud American. I thank you all for what you're doing today, just the sheer fact that you're having a meeting on homelessness. I was at Seminary Park today. I think I was there for about six hours and I was, I came after there was a notification, which was an official notification, just a notification from one of the homeless coalition members that people were being evicted. So I showed up there and the police were standing by. It was very clear they didn't want to be there. The city sanitation service, they were there. It was clear they didn't want to be there. So if none, none of them wanted to be there, why were they there? Well, I think it's very clear from listening to everyone here that it, they want to be there. The office of the mayor is, is who wanted to be there. There's, there's a lot of issues that have been going on with the statements that have been put out. They're, they're factually inaccurate by the mayor's office. It's very clear gaslighting that's coming out. That's backed up by statement after statement from a variety of local community leaders and managers who've done their own surveys. It's factually inaccurate. There's a legal term for this. It's called malfeasance. If you want to just chew on that for a while, you can, but that's exactly what's going on here. There's homeless veterans and unhoused, homeless veterans in Bloomington. Now, as a veteran myself, I tell you, man, this is un-American. It's wrong. You know, there's American flag flying in Seminary Park. You know, this is a country of freedoms. So why aren't people free to be in the park? That's just wrong. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to listen to everyone's concerns that were raised today and actually act on that. So they can say, oh, well, you know, people, I, I hear you. You should act. There, there is a lot of topics, a lot of things brought to the table. You should take action. You could do a variety of things. You could open the pavilion at Switchyard Park. You could unlock the bathrooms. You could submit a move order to the parks and You could submit a move order to the Parks and Rec Department to say, move the toilet that's in Bryant Park to seminary. You shouldn't yield the power you have. You can simply order this to be done and exercise your authority. Finally, if you could take action, this meeting's by making a motion for a vote and then voting to allow camping. That's just a start. You could author a one-sentence ordinance in this meeting saying camping's allowed. There's no reason why this wouldn't stand if you pass it legally. I don't think there's a reason it wouldn't stand. So if you do this today, you can deliberate further. It could be one week, it could be one month, but if you do it today, you deliberate further. Anyway, excuse me. Thank you again. And please exercise every legal power you have during this meeting. You might think that you don't have the power and all of it rests with the mayor, but I don't think that's legally accurate. I think you do have power here and I think you can make a change if you just say so. So I encourage you today to be good Americans and do what's right. God bless you and God bless her homeless.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Mr. Lucas?
I don't see anybody else who hasn't already made a comment tonight.
Okay. Will let everyone else know or anyone who cares to speak, you could still have an opportunity for public comment by using the raised hand function in Zoom or send a note in chat. It is our intent to end around nine, 9:00 PM. And we will take toward the end of the meeting for council final comments before we adjourn. And if we have Mr. Lucas, probably 10 minutes remaining at three minutes. So can we save the next four people and then we'll end after that? Five, is that proper?
Again, I don't see anybody else who hasn't already made a comment that, that is requesting to speak. So I'm not sure if you're asking for a second round of comments from the public. Oh.
No, just first round if we went second, as much as I'd like to, I think we'd have to offer that too.
I do see two, two new requests for comment. First is Sean Bueller.
Excuse me. Okay.
Sean should be ready to unmute.
Okay. Hey, can everyone hear me?
Sure can, Sean. Go ahead. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Thanks. I won't use too much time. Most of what I wanted to say has been said all right tonight already. I've been involved with homelessness issues here in Bloomington for some time now. And it's really frustrating to just see a continuous pattern emerge with how the city manages or fails to manage our unhoused neighbors. I remember back to when this exact same situation was happening down on Kirkwood, whatever it was, four or five years ago now. And we had the same kind of meetings and we had the same kind of discussions with public officials and we had the same statements from Mayor Hamilton. And everything was just brushed under the rug. And then it's been coming to a head again this year because of pandemic. And now it seems like the city is just trying to brush everything under the rug again. And eventually you're gonna run out of room under that rug. And I am gonna echo the sentiments of many tonight that say it would be really great to see the city take some tangible action that we don't have to keep shuffling things under the rug. Whether that is helping financially with the opening of a new winter shelter, whether it means, you know, examining rent prices, examining new housing options, something needs to change. And then I'm also a third-year medical student here and I work shifts at the emergency department. And over the last month, I've seen several individuals come in from Seminary Park with exposure injuries, with burns from the heating units that they have to put inside their tents because it's so cold. And that's not, these, these statements aren't to reinforce the fact that all of these people shouldn't be camping in tents. I mean, they shouldn't have to be living in tents, but if they choose to do so, and they are citizens of our community, which they are, I would like to see the city do everything that they can to support those citizens. Because forcing them out of the camps is just gonna continue leading to this cycle of they're gonna spread out into town. They're gonna be at more risk of exposure injuries, more risk of serious health ailments. They're gonna come into the emergency room. We're gonna do everything we can for them. But when we discharge them, they don't have anywhere to go. And this is just gonna continue to happen until the mayor and the city decides to take tangible action, like many cities, many of which are less progressive than Bloomington, have done successfully so throughout the country. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you for your comment, Sean. We have any else? Anyone else, Mr. Lucas?
Yes, Steve, who should be able to unmute.
I have just unmuted. Couple of things.
Hey, Steve, can you give us your full name?
First of all.
Give us your full name, please.
Steve Lehman.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I really appreciate the council having this meeting tonight. On this night of all. And I also want to say that Forrest Gilmore spoke early tonight. And he is the expert on what we're talking about. And his words were very, very clear. And everyone should refer back to that as far as opinions about what we're talking about. I did not know that Seminary Park was gonna be cleared out today. I've kind of been expecting it and I drive through there almost daily. And I drove through there this morning and I noticed that some of the folks had decamped, had moved their things out. And, and I kind of wondered about that. But, and you know, I wasn't necessarily concerned because the signs and the, the communication from the mayor's office was that it should have already happened and, and things like that. So I wasn't really concerned about it. And then when I got home this evening, I had already planned to be on this call tonight. And then I found out that it had happened. And so I, I will say this. I'm overwhelmed by what happened today. The fact that, you know, the police department had to be there, city sanitation and all these things like that. All those folks were forced to be there because that's their job to be there. And this is based on the opinion of one person. We know who that is. I would say that the city is failing as far as taking care of people and doing the things that really the city should be concerned with. And it's very stressful for everyone around here. And I would just like to say that if there's anything that the city can do to make this better, I'm not an expert on this. I'm not a social worker. I have no experience in this. But I would just say that it's time for the city to step up. And again, the city council, appreciate you having this tonight in, in, in light of what happened today. But it's time for the city to step up. And if you gotta overrule the mayor, overrule the mayor and make this thing happen. Because we need to take care of these folks.
Thank you.
It's not just about the folks in Seminary Park. It's about the people all over town.
Thank you. Thank you. Who do we have now, Mr. Lucas? Anyone else?
We have Moko Green, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, my name is Will and I'm with the Monroe County Green Party. For the remaining time, I would really, really like to hear what the, what our elected officials, what their thoughts are on everything that's going on. We heard a lot from our community. We heard a lot from some of our service providers and residents. And we would, and we would like to hear the thoughts of our elected officials who are here tonight with us. And I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Next up. Sorry, I've got a few requests for comment that came in over the chat. We have Denise Valkyrie.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to make a statement. I don't, I'm not sure what else has been said tonight. I see a lot of great people here in the room. And I'm a little overwhelmed, to be honest. I feel abused by the city. I feel teased by the city. As a parent and as a person who has organized actions and jobs for television and theater and made, you know, had a lot of people counting on me to follow through with the statements that I've made. I feel like this has been the wishy-washiest thing I've ever seen in my flipping life. And I'm keeping my language really clean. Those of you who know me know that's really hard for me to do right now. To post a date and then sit there and hold it and not do anything. Everybody got riled up and ready to go. They, the city's done this now to us three times that I am aware of. First, we hold a meeting and everybody figures, well, you know, they're not gonna move the tents out. We agreed they're not gonna move the tents out. And the next day it's like, oh no, we were only talking about that night. Didn't make it clear throughout the meeting. Didn't make it clear to anyone throughout the meeting. Didn't make it clear to the press. Everybody felt lied to. And that's the problem that we're having. We're being, we feel that we're being lied to. If I told my kids, we're gonna go someplace on the 11th. And then I said, oh, well, you know, the 11th didn't work out and I don't know why, I'm just not gonna talk to you yet. I'm not gonna tell you why. I'm just gonna ghost you. And that's exactly what's been going on with this, in the city. Where have all the people in the park gone? Do we know? Is there somebody sleeping in my shed tonight? And if they are, they're welcome to, so they can at least stay out of the weather for tonight. The city didn't make sure anybody had a place to go. They, they keep saying, oh yeah, well, this person says we've got tons of room. But the homeless people are telling the city and telling us that no, there isn't tons of room. We have had a problem with homelessness for centuries, since the beginning of time. And we've done the same thing over and over and over as communities with people who are experiencing homelessness. We push them aside. We wait until they get angry. We wait until there's a big mess. The people that live around that park and work around that park are upset because the city won't put in toilets. And there's trash because the city won't put in trash removal. And there's no place for these people to keep, be able to keep warm safely, as the emergency responder just told us. There are safe ways to camp out at night in the winter. I'm not saying that that's what we want people to do, but we have to come up with something better. And we know what something better is. And Forrest is working on something better. And to yank these people out of the park before it was finished is a load of crap. I'm sorry. I just, I'm so upset with Mayor Hamilton. I'm so upset with the people that actually walked in there. And I wonder if his wife even knows what he's doing. Sorry, I know that's not professional and I know that's not political, but that's how I'm feeling tonight. I hope, I hope none of us ever get rid of our home. I know. I timed that.
No, you, if you can finish up. Yeah, thank you.
I'm finished.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments.
This deal, though.
Thank you. Mr. Lucas, do you say we have one more speaker and one more comment? I'm sorry, one written comment?
Yes, I, I received a message over the chat that Sam Dove requested that I read. Sam says, why do homeless folks sleep outside? It's not okay to do it in the winter. The homeless need homes. And that's Sam's comment. And the final speaker I see at the moment is Jennifer Crossley, who should now be able to unmute.
Okay. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine, Jennifer. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, I'll be brief, but my name is Jennifer Crossley. And I echo the sentiments of the community members that are on this call right now. You know, we've had conversations time and time and time again. But right now, I think the community is really looking for long-term solutions for those folks that are experiencing homelessness. So I urge those that have the powers that be to please work together to find long-term solutions for people instead of the trauma of, you know, moving people around and, and moving them out of their parks. And again, finding long-term solutions instead of dehumanizing our community members that are experiencing homelessness with actions such as showing up with a garbage truck, treating them like they're trash. It was unacceptable. It's disheartening. And I really would love to see action be taken for long-term solutions. And until long-term solutions have been made, I stand with the community members on this call and ask for them, those folks that are occupying Seminary Park to stay where they are. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, councilmember Scimbler.
Yes, thank you. I'm just wondering, I know that we had seen Mr. Keller offer comments earlier tonight, but perhaps Mr. Lucas could check with him through chat and just ensure that it's not a different person using that thing.
I, I did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
He's requesting a second comment.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to council member comments, I really, really want to thank everyone who participated and for being with us this evening. Thank you very, very much for your public comments. And we'll move into council member final comments before we adjourn. Again, thank you. Okay, do we have any council members that would like to make a comment? Final comment. I see councilmember Scimbler is still here. It's councilmember Pete Monssmith. Okay. Go ahead, councilmember Scimbler.
Thanks. Thank you. I've been trying to kind of organize these thoughts. My thanks as well to all of you. You all can be anywhere else tonight, almost, but you've chosen to be here and you chose to be out for your neighbors and I am grateful for that. Some things that one of the gentlemen who spoke toward the end asked to hear what stood out to us and what our reactions are. And every, every person who offered comments tonight had something powerful to say. But I particularly want to acknowledge them, several specific people who I think offered particularly powerful comments. The first observation I have is that we have had comments tonight that truly humanized this issue. Forgive me in advance if I'm mispronouncing any news, but Kate Wrightmeyer, Kirsten White, Heather Lake, all of you underscored the notion that there is no one path to being unhoused. And by the same token, there typically isn't one path out of it either. And you shared some stories that were very powerful and you reminded us that we always need to humanize this issue and not just talk about it as an issue. So I thank you for that. So several of you, Jennifer Crossley most recently, but also Sarah Schwartz and Sean Bueller and Kaylee McCoy, I think was her name. I appreciate what you said, that these are multiple interconnected issues. We don't, we obviously have short-term, immediate needs, but there is a need for long-term solutions too. Many of you spoke about housing first. And I think that is a powerful place to start. So I thank you for that and I thank you for acknowledging that this is about housing prices in Bloomington and it is about a strained social services safety net. And it is about strained resources from the private sector and from individual donors, particularly during a pandemic. So there are a lot of intertwined issues and I want to thank those who acknowledged that and spoke about that. I'm pleased to hear that there are some hopeful developments. I am not sure I have the latest knowledge of what's going on with the low-barrier shelters that's being worked on. Forrest Gilmore and Jean Kapler spoke about this as well, Reverend Gilmore, Ms. Kapler. Keep us posted. I'm not sure how else to say that. But I think that could be a very important asset for this community, obviously. So please let us know how that is evolving. I know actually both of you personally. And you know that I'm I know actually both of you personally, and you know that I know some things about fundraising too. So please use me as a resource, if need be. I look forward to more solutions like that. One final comment I want to offer, several of you mentioned that there are very few or relatively few members of the unhoused community here this evening offering comment. And so I want to again stress, many of you were part of our conversations for the holidays about the CAPS Commission, the Community Advisory on Public Safety Commission. We are receiving applications for those who want to serve on that commission. And I'll invite my colleague, councilmember Piedmont Smith, to speak more to this if she might. But my understanding from our office is that we have received fewer than 10 applications for that. And we would like to see many more and we would like to see much more interest in that. We particularly want to seek out those voices that are underrepresented historically. So if you feel called to that role, please consider applying. Please know that that information is on our website or you can, if it's easier, just come to City Hall and our, the front desk staff can help you access that information. But again, thank you for humanizing this issue. Thank you for the, the ways in which you have outlined the interconnected issues that we need to address, both short-term and long-term. And Reverend Gilmore and others in the social services community, please keep us posted, particularly if the new shelter comes online. So, thank you all.
Thank you, councilmember Scambler. I do not see if any of our other colleagues wish to make a final comment. So I will, again, I want to.
Sandberg, put her hand up, I think.
Pardon me? Just very briefly, because this is a listening session.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
This is not about us, this is a listening session. It, it's always interesting and it's always educational. So as with all of us, we do appreciate you being here this evening. Just a reminder that we do work with other entities with respect to issues surrounding social services and housing. I'm very much looking forward to the efforts of Afrot Pfefferman with United Way and Tina Peterson with the Community Foundation. I know that that's a team who have been tasked to lead some efforts forward here. The city of Bloomington alone cannot act without the cooperation of, of multidisciplinary experts here in the community. Again, thank you for weighing in, thank you for your information. I've taken great notes. My camera was off for a while, that was not because I was not listening and taking good notes. I have pages and pages here that frankly, I need to process before I can make any, any further statement. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Sandberg. Okay, not seeing.
Do you see me, councilmember Sims?
I do now, councilmember Piedmont Smith. Well, we're popping around on Zoom, so I did not see you. I do now, go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody who spoke this evening. And I know it was hard for some of you and it was very emotional and it's, it's been a very trying few weeks. I want to speak to some things that, that we can do as a city council and things that I've been working on and some colleagues have been working on. I want to give a shout out to my colleagues, councilmember Flaherty and councilmember Rosenbarger, who have been working on an ordinance to, to give some additional protections to people experiencing homelessness who may be camping. Giving more advanced notice, 15 days' notice, not only to the people who are in an encampment, but also to the South Central Housing Network, related social service agencies and different layers of government, county and city. For example, I mean, I didn't, I didn't know there was going to be an eviction in December and I didn't know there was going to be an eviction today. So this would require 15 days' notice to all, all concerned parties. And the, the ordinance is still being written, so it's not finalized. But another aspect of it would be that people's belongings would have to be saved and kept in a safe place for an extended period to give them a chance to recoup, recover their possessions, which as, as I know is, is incredibly important. If you don't have a home, then everything that has meaning in your life is, is in your possessions. And if those are gone, that, that has a, that leaves a big hole. So those are some things we are working on. There's also a homeless bill of rights that Vox Booker and the, the county Human Rights Commission have been working on and that I plan to follow up on to hopefully bring that before the city council as well. I mean, frankly, the city council could overrule the Parks Board rule that says there's no camping parks. You know, I don't know if we would have enough votes to do that. I think that allowing camping in parks comes with responsibilities that, you know, we'd have, it's, it's, it would come with responsibilities. And I don't know if the city as a whole and if the council as a whole is prepared to take on those responsibilities. But just to be honest with you, we could do that. The, the longer-term plans, which are absolutely needed, I agree on that front. There is a, there, there were extensive discussions on homelessness several years ago and a plan came out in 2014 called the Heading Home Plan that was crafted for the South Central Housing Network with some consultants and they did a lot of outreach. And the plan kind of is on the shelf. So we need to take it off the shelf, dust it off, update it and start to actually implement it. And to do that, I think we really need somebody who is dedicated to addressing homelessness in Monroe County. And I've, I've talked to the Afrot Pfefferman and, and, and to the mayor and Dan Combs and others about jointly funding a position for at least a few years with funds from the community foundation and various layers of government to really take this plan that was developed with a lot of community input six years ago and implement it and actually get some longer-term solutions going. So I think there is some hope in that direction. There's going to be a meeting on the 25th to further talk about longer-term homelessness solutions. And so I do have a bit of optimism there. I really, I just want to say, I think it's probably clear from what I said at the beginning of the meeting that I oppose what the, the mayor did today as far as evicting people from the park. And I just hope we can go forward from here and I'm not sure what the solution is. But as you can tell by my rambling the last few minutes, I have several ideas I'm working on. And I invite anybody to reach out to me. As far as the Community Advisory on Public Safety Commission, that my colleague, councilmember Scambler mentioned, if you are interested in applying for that, and we very much would like to have input from people who work with homeless individuals or people who have experienced homelessness, because that's a very important voice we need to hear. The, you can go to bloomington.in.gov/OnBoard. And there you'll see a list of commissions and you, if you scroll down, you'll see the Community Advisory on Public Safety Commission. And then you can click on apply. You can also contact the city council office. And they would be happy to give you a paper application. I think we're also going to send some out to Shalom and other, and other places. So, sorry for my rambling, but I really appreciate everybody being here and we've got work to do. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Piedmont Smith. And I'll finish up this evening. I too want to thank everyone that was here tonight and particularly everyone who took the time to, to speak and share with us some of their lived experiences and their truths. The whole intent tonight, and I will share this, just like many of my colleagues have said, we have multiple conversations on multiple fronts, multiple levels with the county, with our social service providers, with advocates. And as chair of this commission, along with the agreement with my, I'm sorry, with this committee, along with my colleagues, we just wanted to provide another venue to get more comment, to hear from more people about our homelessness situation and, and some of the issues surrounding that. I too wish that we had more of the actual, those that are with housing or those that have recently been impacted by having no housing. But we heard from many advocates today, a lot of the social service providers, many of you that are closest to those that are most impacted. I'll take full responsibility for not inviting the mayor's office or any city staff. I, that would have been helpful and I think it could have added to this. But my thinking was, I thought it would have taken away from the time allotted to get to the real core of what I thought were, or what I would like to have done. And that was to hear from those that were most impacted. So maybe we could learn a little bit more from this demographic, from these people, so that we can at some point hopefully be more helpful moving on down the line. I heard a call on what action will be taken from the public comments and the information that we have heard tonight. I think you heard my colleague, councilmember Sandberg, say she's diligently taking notes. So am I, and I can bet you that so are my other colleagues. Our council staff will create, it'll be a basic memo of this meeting, but also we'll go through the, the transcripts of this and they will forward us the questions that were generated. And then we'll, and I, I'll say I will, I can't speak for everyone else, but I'll make sure that those questions that were generated are directed to the office or the personnel that could maybe have the most effect or to start having more discussions regarding with that. This is a multi-pronged solution attack. This is a regional approach. This is bigger than Bloomington. So we have to work as a team, like-minded, with many of our colleagues within and without Bloomington. And I'm looking forward to that. Will there be monumental changes tomorrow morning based on what we have tonight? I think that's highly unlikely. But I think it will, it has helped me to gain more knowledge, to generate more of a desire to meet and work on a stronger solution. And I've heard some ideas tonight that I think will be helpful moving forward. Understand, I'm just one of nine on our city council. We will have discussions, but I think us together, like-minded, can be powerful and have some effect on some of the systemic and policy changes that many have clamored for this evening. And lastly, action on long-term solutions. Again, I will reiterate that that's absolutely right. We have temporary solutions, we have longer-term solutions. Then do we have sustainable solutions? And I think that's the goal that we're all working with, are working toward. And so I'm looking forward to doing that. And I call for many that we heard from tonight, I look forward to working with you all as best we can with my colleagues moving on into the future. We have a lot of very intellectually gifted and knowledgeable people out there. In many cases, much more knowledgeable than I am about those situations. And I am looking forward to continue to work with each and every one of us as we move forward and working toward a solution. I have made notes, even though I did not invite the mayor, and I will not call him today. I thought that was pretty interesting for one of our colleagues. But I will promise you that we will have a discussion, we will talk, continue to talk. And I will share much of what we heard, if not all of what we've heard this evening. And again, there's many of us at this table working toward a solution. And I'll do the best I can to make everyone aware of what we've heard tonight, what we've heard in the past and what will continue here to hopefully work toward a solution. Again, thank you all very, very much for being here this evening. And I think it's time to adjourn. I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, been moved in second. Thanks everyone again. Thank you, my colleagues, for being here this evening, taking your time. And let's just keep working. Have a good night, everyone.